Twenty-one at 6:00 P. M. And our clerk is with us virtually this evening. If you could, please, Ms. Jimenez, take the role.
Councilmember Henry was going to join us via go-to meeting. I don't know if she's on yet or not.
I'm here. Thank you.
Councilmember Curat?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Halls?
Here.
Mayor Linsky?
Here. Thank you. All right, we have two items tonight for discussion, consideration, and possible direction to staff. And first up is a presentation, discussion, and direction to staff regarding the city serving as the pass-through sponsor of a community development block grant for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition.
Mayor, Council, I'm Rudy Rodriguez. I'm the deputy city manager for the city of Cottonwood. Today, we're talking about a possible sponsorship opportunity for the city of Cottonwood with the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. I won't be going through the entire presentation here because the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition has their own presentation. Want to go ahead and mention, some of you know Carol Quazulla from the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. She's the president, and she's with us today. And so is Peter Flynn, who is Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Board Chair. They've approached us to ask if we would sponsor a $1.65 million CDBG COVID grant for the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition. And this is to acquire two properties at 654 and 660 North Main Street. The latter of the two properties is to become a transitional housing for the homeless coalition. Staff initially asked VVHC, Verde Valley Homeless Coalition, to look for the possibility of obtaining sponsorship through other sources, mainly Spectrum Healthcare. They unfortunately could not do it. One is the amount of money that would have to be used and on a reimbursement-type basis. And then, second, of course, is that they don't have the experience with CDBG grants that the city of Cottonwood has. We do have some concerns about the grant itself. Wanted to go ahead and mention that today, we're not approving anything. We're basically, it's a notice that they would like to have the sponsorship. There is a couple of next steps besides today, the work session. On the 27th, they will hold, would like to hold a public hearing if it is a favorable sponsorship opportunity for the city of Cottonwood. And then, on May the 5th, they'd like to bring this back for the actual approval of the sponsorship. And the grant itself is a pass-through, for the city is a pass-through. Though, the city of Cottonwood believes that this is an excellent opportunity to get some help for some people that are down on their luck, the homeless, and also to help people transition from homelessness into a very active and participating citizen of the community. We do have some concerns, and we'll put them up there after they're done with their presentation. But some of them, of course, is the staff time that it will take to complete the program. One, it takes staff time to make sure that the program itself is completed to the grant's requirements, which means that we would be overlooking the project to make sure that the scope and the requirements are met, and also that they meet all the codes. Secondly, of course, it requires that there be reporting on a timely basis, which we would have to take care of. They would provide us with the necessary information. However, we being the pass-through would have to go ahead and maintain the reporting on it. Should the VVHC cease to exist, the responsibility to, would be for the city of Cottonwood to reimburse the CDBG for any remaining period, meaning the prorate, if they were only to complete two years of the program, we would have to return back three-fifths of the $1.65 million. The backstop to that, of course, would be that we would take possession of all the properties in question at a time when we ourselves are trying to lighten our property load by selling some of our properties. The things that that poses to the city of Cottonwood is a number of things. Is if they cease to exist or start to begin to struggle, the city of Cottonwood would have a couple of options. The city may be, city council may feel obligated to fund them for the remaining portion of the term in order to keep them in town. They could let them go under, and we would assume the properties and have to pay back the remaining amount. Or the city itself would become a new homeless and transitional housing provider. You know, again, we, on the other hand, they do, we would, I think it's a good program. However, they do have funding from Emergency Solutions Program, Grant Program currently is supporting them, helping out, as well as a lot of local support. Of course, our concern is this is a five-year period of which time we would have to be taking up staff time to make sure that all the, you know, i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed on this particular program. With that being said, I'll go ahead and have Peter Flynn and Carol go ahead and make a presentation that they've prepared for us. And then, we'll go ahead and post up the pros and cons of, that the city has concerns with.
All right, very good. Mr. Flynn, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rudy. I think I know how to operate this. So, here to talk about the CDBG grant. And...
Mr. Flynn, if I could just ask you to just speak very clearly into your mic, because we have some folks that are with us virtually, and it might be difficult for them to hear if you don't speak directly in there.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry, I clicked this twice. I see it's a delay. Okay. What is proposed, I have $1.5 million here, but Rudy is correct. We did some reestimating, and we're at $1.64 million that would come from the Arizona Department of Housing. And I'll just comment that they are very enthusiastic about passing this money on to us. If we were successful, we would use it to purchase the two properties, which I'll show you in a moment, 654 and 660 North Main Street. We would do minor improvements to the building that we currently use for programming. We would put a second bathroom in, which means we would move an office and shift a wall a bit, but that's minor. The rest of the funds, we would propose adding a building at 660 North Main Street for transitional housing. And as Rudy mentioned, they have to flow through the city. We would have loved to have tried to do this straight, but the rules of this CDBG funding is that it has to flow through the city. Now, I'm trying to... Oh, here we are. It just takes time. A little bit about who we are. We're just coming up on our third year of operation as a nonprofit. We've been operating a daytime drop-in center, which has served as an overnight emergency shelter on cold nights, about 50 nights in winter. That was subject to a conditional use permit. We recently were given an ESG, an emergency shelter grant, of $193,000 from Arizona DES to expand that operation to year-round. And we have a one-year lease on the property. Properties are owned by a foundation. Ruth Chenoweth and family were part of that. It was, the buildings were used to operate the food bank. They've been very supportive of us. We have a nice lease rate with them, but they need to sell. So, this, essentially, we're hoping not to have the property sold out from under us. We take what's known as a case management approach, where we think of ourselves as a gateway to services for the homeless. This is a population that frequently has physical or mental health issues, so we have worked very closely with Spectrum. Spectrum has an outreach team that we're constantly dealing with, with a flow both directions, us getting people to them, them getting people to us for shelter, working with Steps to Recovery Homes for substance abuse programs, working with Catholic charities for housing. So, we really see ourselves as a way of connecting to the population and then trying to pass on to services that are available. Have a very strong board. The mayor always points out that he's on the board, a police commander, newspaper publisher, a pastor who is active in interfaith activity. So, we're well-connected to churches. We have CPA, the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and a bunch of other people with either a management or a social services background. So, we are a well-represented, well-managed board. And we have broad, broad support, both through donations and through volunteers. Like every other organization, we've been strained on volunteers because, this year, because most volunteers are like me, they're older people. So, COVID had an impact, but they were happy to say that the vaccination is dealing with that. And we've had good, we've had good donations of a wide range of sizes, foundation support, Arizona Community Foundation, Yavapai County, Sedona, Bank of America, and now State of Arizona contracts. So, we're a well-functioning, well-governed nonprofit. And this is what, what we would like to buy is in red, and we are currently in the right-hand side of that. And all of our programming is in the building marked W, which is behind a fence, a screened fence. So, when the homeless are with us, they are in an enclosed area that is off the street. The building marked N is, we're not using it for programming. It is only used for storage at the moment. And so, it's certainly good for the homeless, because it's close to services, but we think it's good for Cottonwood as well, because if they're with us, they're not on the street in a town oriented to tourism. In the adjacent property, there's a single-family residence marked SFR, which is not being used, but behind the garage, there's a high-quality manufactured home, four bedrooms, and it has sprinklers. It's one of two in the city of Cottonwood that has sprinklers. So, we would be able to use that for transitional housing, which I'll talk about in a moment. City of Cottonwood has designated all of Main Street as an entertainment area, and we could support and work with that, because there are two structures on the street that we would make available. The building marked N has on-street and off-street parking. We could, we could find other places for storage. So, it would be ideal if somebody wanted to use it as a gallery, an artist space, brewery, wine-making, whatever. And the single-family residence is smaller and would need some work, but it too, we would be prepared to make available, you know, for instance, as a place for artists. So, what we are proposing is not at odds with the designation of the entertainment area. Just briefly, transitional housing. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll wind up quickly. Some homeless are going to be homeless pretty much their whole life. Some aren't. Either bad choices when they were younger, or an economic upheaval in their life. And we focus on trying to help that component of the population get out of being homeless. So, a hand-up, not just a hand-out, is a theme of us. Transitional housing is a bridge. It's taking a person who has found employment, who has an income, but can't immediately move into housing. If you're homeless and you get a job, you can't walk out and get permanent housing, because you don't have the first month's rent, you don't have the money you have to pay to get gas and power hooked up. And so, really, what transitional housing is, is a parking place for three to six months in which we would charge rent, but we would hold back a portion of that rent to be given back to the client when they move out. This is part of helping them get through that next step. I just want to say, it's not a halfway house. It's not meant for people coming out of jail. It's not meant for people who are in 12-step programs. If you can't pay the rent, the shelter is for you. This is for people that are on the way out. And again, would be subject to a Cottonwood, a conditional use permit. If we got the grant, we would propose using the existing manufactured home and then building one new structure. And this is the kind of concept we would do, where it's really aimed at this market. So, it's got, this, for instance, is six bedrooms with outside doors and a private small patio, and an inside door to share two bathrooms and a kitchen sitting area. So, you have your own space, but you have to share the two baths and the kitchen. And it's a similar concept to Patriot House, which was doing this for vets on Sixth Street, just opposite the library. And they have recently sold that to the Verde Valley Sanctuary, who was going to use that for their clientele. So, if we got the grant, this is what we would do. That's the end of the comments. Carol and I would be happy to answer questions. There is a risk with this, because no nonprofit can guarantee funding. I wish people gave five-year grants, but I will comment that the Arizona Department of Economic Security gave us the $193,000 grant as operating funds, and it's the Arizona Department of Housing that wants to give us this grant to get the capital structure in place to do that. So, in our opinion, given our governance and our relationship with the state and the foundation and local fundraising that we do, we at least think that we're low-risk. So, thank you again very much.
Thanks, Mr. Flynn. Appreciate your presentation. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Flynn or Rodriguez?
What's the total square footage of that house? And is it going to be shared, men and women, or are they going to have separate sections? Or how's that going to work?
We would be comfortable putting men and women in that house. It's next door to a place that would have supervision all the time. So, we would, we would think that would lower the risk. I mean, there would be a button that you could push. So, right next door at 654, there's always a supervisor on staff. So, we would do that. I'll comment that our shelter does shelter, it's 20 beds, and we do put men and women in there, no children, but we put men and women in there. We've never had an incident in there, because we have overnight supervision.
And the total square footage?
Sorry, of this, the total square footage, I think, is 1,700 square feet. It's $440,000 divided by $250. I know that, because that's how we priced it out.
And then, the existing manufactured home, you would also turn into transitional housing?
Yes. It's four bedrooms, it's got a sprinkler. The current occupant would move out, so it's just by luck that we would fall into that. We should have mentioned, the million-dollar price for this is well below the appraised value. The foundation that owns it really is supportive and is selling it to us at well below its value.
Any other questions for Mr. Flynn?
This is going to be an uncomfortable question. Recently, you had somebody in charge that stole some of your money.
Yes.
From my understanding, the board was advised not to put that person in that position, and you did. So, that just brings up concerns. What have you done to prevent that from happening again? I would dare say that if something like that were to happen again, your funding's going to dry up, and we're going to be on the hook.
Great question. So, two comments. The assumption, sort of the automatic assumption when there's fraud, is that there is bad governance. And in our case, we have very tight governance. There's been about five incidents of serious nonprofit fraud in this area, some of which has gone on for months. Ours went on for one month because of a cash review at the end of every month. So, we think that a addiction was involved, but it was small, and it was small because of the controls the board had. I'm not aware that we were advised not to hire the person, and I've been on the board all through this period. So, that comment is a surprise to me. We have good controls. We've even made them tighter, but the controls we had relative to other nonprofits are strong, which is why it was as small as it was.
As you all know, I serve on the board as well. And that was an incident that definitely was damaging, you know, and I think some of our sponsors were concerned about that. But I know that we've had many, if not all, of those come back to continue sponsoring the coalition.
Yes, so far, 100%. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a Peter question?
Sure.
Maybe everybody else got out of the documents, but I was a little unclear. So, there's a five-year guarantee to operate. What, that we would become responsible for if you folded, what is, or what has to operate for five years? Because you're doing two separate things. You're going to be running your drop-in center and your shelter, and then you're transitioning to a transition center. So, this grant, is it required that you open and maintain a transition center for five years, or you just keep doing what you're currently doing for five years?
Again, that's a great question, and we are trying to get that specifically answered, and I haven't been able to do that yet from the, from the person at the Department of Housing. My assumption is that it is focused on operating the overnight shelter, but that's an assumption on my part. So, we are trying to nail that down.
So, we're, the sound of it, then, we're going to be taking $330,000 off the plate, off of our plate, every year that you're successful and continue to operate. Is that right?
Yes.
And do we have any security, such as the property, in case you do dissolve and we do get, and we are on the hook for the remainder of the grant?
Absolutely. The property would transition back to the city.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it is the security, and it would go back. If we cease to be able to operate, the agreements in place would transfer that back to the city.
Can you share with us the appraised value and when that appraisal was completed?
The appraisal was done in 2020, and it was excluding the manufactured home, the appraised value was $1.075 million. What we are buying is the two properties plus the manufactured home for $1 million. The manufactured home has not been valued, but it's a high-quality manufactured home.
Other questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
On your transitional housing, the 1,700-square-foot transitional house with six bedrooms, what do you anticipate the cost to construct that?
We went out, we have identified a individual, a builder in the area, who would serve as a building manager pro bono. He, in turn, consulted others, and the sense was that $250 per square foot excluding parking, paving, was the right number to use. So, in our estimate, that's what we use, $250 per square foot. This would, this would be basic housing, you know, given its use. We would not be putting in fancy elements. So, the thought was $250 per square foot.
Question, I don't know if public safety has any issues or concerns with what we're talking about here, what's going on over in that area. I know there were concerns previously on the previous location that was in a residential area.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Matthews. From our, excuse me, as well, I am the commander that serves on the board and have been for the last several years. But in terms of location and the responses to the center specifically, we think that this is probably one of the more ideal locations that we've had, which Mr. Flynn had mentioned. It's screened off and set back from the property in which there's a, there's less visibility than some of the other locations that were there. But in terms of daily activity, I think that has gone down tremendously just by the nature of the current executive director, the open lines of communication that they have, not only with the community members, but with the police department as well.
I'm sorry, I'll, one last question, I'll be done. So, previously, when this was around over a year ago, I believe some of the other transitional housing programs were not yet full. Are we in a position now to where they're full, and there's more of a demand for transitional housing?
There's transitional housing for vets that is now flipped over to the Verde Valley Sanctuary. There is rental housing that's really not run as transitional housing. I'm thinking of Angie's. But there is no transitional housing program we are aware of in this area now.
So, Angie's House does not do that, nor does...
Steps to Recovery.
Steps to Recovery, then. They're not transitional?
Steps to Recovery is substance abuse programming. So, typically, it would be a shorter time period, and I'm not aware of it being, having the focus on retaining a portion of the rent as a reserve, working with a person to identify permanent housing, and then giving that back. Same thing with Angie's House.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add, Ron?
No, it's all hypothetical. I know that anytime we need shelter overnight, our police department is usually able to find something. But I do believe that all of our housing solutions in our community are near capacity, if not at capacity. So any additional housing, regardless of the population, is probably helpful. But it's just hypothetical, I don't know for sure.
All right, Council, any other?
One question to staff, then, do you feel comfortable that the property here is good security for what we're putting up?
So before Rudy answers, and he has a list of pros and cons, free to actually visualize a little better. It's probably worth the property appraised at, the million makes sense to me. And that neighborhood is a great track, you know, right there on Main Street. It just depends on how far along they get before they fail. So if they fail in the first year, we'll be on the hook for a little bit of money there for it to come up. But the further along they go, then our debt responsibility is reduced. So, you know, two years, three years, you know, then it starts to get lower where the ratio is good. I don't think we would have a hard time recouping that money, but it is a risk.
All right, well, let's have Mr. Rodriguez then finish up your presentation.
This is only one slider that we have up here. And, you know, we all agree that this is a wonderful opportunity for BVHC to provide some services by getting, obtaining the properties and get closer to their mission. They also have been operating for three years as a 501(c)(3). Prior to that, I think they were still operating prior to that, obviously. The CDVG program that they're riding on is 100% funding. So there's no matching funds on that particular program. And talking to the, some of the program administrators, there's quite a large sum of money available. And they actually encouraged BVHC to make sure that they submitted for as much as they needed to make sure that they didn't have shortfall to buy the infrastructure that they needed, such as the homes. So all that's big positive things. Of course, our concerns are, it's a reimbursement program. We have to front up the money as they build and request for draws on it. Currently, we do that for all of our CDVG programs. No biggie, staff time, and making sure we collect all the invoices and stuff so we don't, so we're not out any money. The other thing, of course, is that there is, that we're responsible for making sure that they meet all the codes and that the project goes through and gets completed as required under the grant's middle. Of course, that would be community development, quite a bit of time for them to make sure all of this happens. And then, of course, the regular reporting would be through finance, making sure that they have all the paperwork and all the financial paperwork is taken care of, and all the reporting is done in a timely fashion. And of course, just the three years also poses a little bit of a concern for us because they have not done traditional housing in the past. This is a new venture for them. So homelessness is what they've been working, and the drop-in shelter is what they've been working with. So that's also a concern. And of course, the five-year program, making sure that they can sustain themselves. Should the program fail, we may be forced to do either help them out, fund them. If, we just didn't want the council to have the pressure that they might have to fund them in the future because they are failing. The other one, of course, is that we might have to pay back a portion of it, regardless of what, taking back the property. And of course, the other one is if we revert land and building to us, that poses a question for council, do we want to become a transitional shelter? A city that has a homeless shelter as well as a transitional shelter? Or do we want to go ahead and do something with that property, which at that point may or may not be an easy sell for the city once it's been transformed into a very specific use? So those are the pros and cons that we have right now there. I'm sure if we can come up with more pros and more cons if we really dig into it. But at this point in time, those are the ones that really concern us and come to the top of the heap.
Mr. Mayor, one, Scott Ellis, Community Development Director, reminded us that, and Mr. Flynn mentioned it, it does require a CUP to operate the transitional center there. So they would still have to go to RP&amp;Z and get approval through that process. I assume they could achieve it, but it is a hoop that would have to be required before they could open and operate.
Mr. Rodriguez, the city has granted money to the BVHC in the past, right?
I believe in the past, we may have through our Building Community Grants Program. But they were not huge amounts, they were small amounts.
Yes, they were, but there were requirements and things that they said they would do, that they needed to do on reporting, that they needed to do, right?
At that time, our reporting was very lax. We have tightened up our reporting in the last couple of years since we started having procurement and finance getting more involved.
I guess my point is, at that time, with whatever the requirements were, did they satisfy those requirements with the grant money that we gave them then?
Again, did we ask for, our requirements were not tight. By that point in time, we weren't really looking at them. We just went ahead and sponsored them at that point in time. Again, there was fairly small amounts. But I guess if there weren't any real tight requirements, yeah, they met the requirements.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, one of the other commanders, Commander Dow would like to add something.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Commander Dow, currently I am in charge of the Patrol Division. I just want to give you another pro for this. As you may be aware, the Ninth Circuit Court has recently ruled that we are not allowed to force people out of the parks and such when they're sleeping or living in those places, if it's a public place, unless we have a place that they can go. If there's a place they can go, we can then insist that they use those facilities before they use our public spaces. So that is a very big pro for us and a tool to help us assist them with getting back to where they need to be and helping clean up the rest of the area. Without this kind of thing, it kind of ties our hands. If they do not have transitional places or homeless shelter to be in, if this goes under, they are where they are, and we can't do much about it. We're kind of stuck like that unless they're committing a crime. So, and being unsheltered is not a crime. So I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thank you, Commander.
Mr. Mayor, I confirmed with our Financial Services Director, the only requirement they were required to spend it on was rent, and they did.
All right, Council, any other? Yes, ma'am.
One more question. If, this is a five-year program, so, and it'll take a little while to get to that point, months or whatever. But are you all comfortable with having the administrative staff in place to handle this for the, for five years?
You, me?
I believe that's for Mr. Flynn, right?
Okay.
Or Carol?
Yes, I think the key issue here will be supplementing the foundation funds and the local donations with a State of Arizona contract, like the one we have now to operate the shelter. If we do that, given the board and the staffing we have, I have no concerns about our ability to operate for the five years.
One last time, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder that Councilmember Henry's, we can't see her picture because we have the slides up, but she is online if she had anything to add.
I don't have the minute, thank you, Ron. This is good discussion, and this is a tough discussion. There are definitely pros, there are definitely risks involved as well. And I'm just, I was dotting down the notes and trying to do a little chart of what ways. There's no doubt that this is a huge need for Cottonwood, for our community. But I was one of those folks that had hoped that we would be able to find a community partner that would be able to take on some of the risks because we do have other responsibilities that are primary as a city that I don't want this impeding on if we are in a worst-case scenario. So right now, I don't have questions. I am enjoying the information and the questions asked by our fellow councilmembers. I did raise some concerns, you know, we do have some high-level city staff and our mayor on, you know, weighing in on a decision that, to me, poses a conflict of interest where we're dealing with funds of this nature. And I believe our city manager, our city attorney, has thought through that and has apparently believes that that's kosher. But it makes me a little uncomfortable where we do have our mayor and a police commander on this board of the entity, also advocating, well, our mayor not so much yet, but advocating for the project. It's just, you know, a very close relationship there that, to me, I just am concerned about that relationship there.
All right, thank you. But I guess we should just maybe just get that question answered, then. I think I have talked with our attorney in the past, and I don't get paid for serving on the board. Nobody gets paid for serving on the board. I don't feel conflicted in any way. I do obviously support this program. I've been with the Coalition since before they were a nonprofit, encouraged them to become a nonprofit, and have certainly found a lot of value in being there and serving the population that they are trying to assist. Mr. Horton, did you want to weigh in on that? Yeah.
Everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can just simply confirm that there is, under Arizona law, there is no conflict because there is no substantial interest, as defined by the law.
Well, I'll say that I think this is a, you know, really wonderful opportunity that's come before the board, the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition Board. One of the many benefits that have come out of the pandemic, you know, certainly a lot of hardship, but there have been some good, good things that have come down. In fact, City of Cottonwood, too, has taken advantage of some of those COVID funds. And this is something that brought to our attention. I know Isabel Rollins from NACOG is, as you said, Mr. Flynn, very enthusiastic, and has really overturned a lot of stones to try to figure out how, how we could possibly make this amount of money flow to the needed cause that the BVHC supports. And it simply must go through a municipality, is my understanding. There's just no other way around it. I know that there's risk. And that's certainly, you know, a concern of all of ours, I think. I know it's definitely a concern of the boards as well because they don't want to fail. And I think, I at least believe in this board. I know there are many opportunities for failure and simply walk away and shut the doors. But the board is very resilient and has never even considered that. And in fact, Snare, you've been involved with them as well for a long time. When it was just a grassroots organization, I think it's really been just a lot of years of perseverance and a strong mission and wanting to support that mission. So again, I would hope that we could provide the opportunity to financially bolster this organization and help out those that really are struggling with housing in the area. And I've volunteered many years at the mission where they would do their operation once a year to connect folks to services. And every time I would volunteer there, I would be surprised at the people I'd meet at the door who had just simply fallen on bad luck, hard times, and needed a little bit of assistance, and we were able to connect them with that assistance. And I think really, this is what this transitional program is all about, is folks that have fallen on hard times, do have a job, just simply need help getting back on their feet, getting into regular housing. Not many units, it'd be, you know, ten units total, but that's an impact. And when it's your own neighbors and community members, it's, you know, I just, I can't underscore how important that is to some folks in our community, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say. I hope that, you know, we'll move on with the public hearing so we can get some more input from the public. But out of all the locations that the board has looked at to operate from, this by far, I think, is truly the best location. And I know that the Chinawiths would like to sell this property. I believe that they want the Coalition to have it, I think they believe in the mission. And it's not near any residential areas, which has been a concern in the past. It is setback from the property, which is a huge benefit. And the board recognizes, too, there's an Arts, Culture, and Entertainment District, and they've got two buildings that they could put to use to help support that here on Main Street in Old Town. So I see, I definitely see a risk, but I see a lot more reward than risk. That's all.
If I may, I just want to provide a little additional information from my perspective. I became involved with the Homeless Coalition when I worked at Catholic Charities. Before, it was a nonprofit organization. When they decided to form as a nonprofit organization, I served on their Board of Directors until I became a councilmember. So I'm very familiar with their mission and the way they approach things. When I worked at Catholic Charities, I worked in homeless services for three years here. And so I can speak to the fact that it is very difficult for a homeless individual to get employment and maintain employment when they don't have appropriate housing. Housing seems to give them the stability they need to be able to make those next steps. And the transitional center that they're talking about opening will require that they have an income before they can stay there, so they already have to take that step. So I see the transitional housing of this giving the stability to folks who have just maybe started to work, the time to build up a reserve and be able to get into maybe whatever the next step of housing is for them. If that next step is low-income housing, now that I work in low-income housing, I can speak to the fact that there is not enough low-income housing for everybody that needs it here in the Verde Valley as a whole. My waitlists are very long at both the properties that I manage. So again, the transitional center would give folks a little bit of time to get on waitlists and figure out what they can do next if it's low-income housing that they're going to need. I think this is a very needed service for Cottonwood and for the Verde Valley as a whole. And I think the way they're proposing it is very well thought out. They are a strong board, they're a strong organization, and they would need to be in order to have weathered the last year or so with the pandemic and all the challenges that that brought. And I also know there are risks with this, but I feel pretty confident that with the leadership that they have and the way they've weathered through the COVID pandemic, that they will continue to provide the service that's needed, and I don't see them failing.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor.
I think Councilmember Narin brought up an interesting point. With the transitional housing, if you're doing three to six months, what happens at the end of that time when there's no housing available for those individuals?
It's not an issue we have thought out. Presumably, we wouldn't put somebody out back into a homeless situation. I know that the general housing crisis in the area has gotten a lot more attention since we've been talking about transitional housing. I don't think of three to six months as a hard number. And if there was a, if it was to go out into a tent, we wouldn't do that.
Mr. Narin, just, I'm curious, the waiting list that you have, how long does it take for someone who just got on the list to get into housing?
Well, it depends on whether they qualify for a one- or a two-bedroom at my properties. If they qualify for a one-bedroom apartment at either my properties, it's a three-to-four-year wait from the day they get on the waitlist right now. Of course, that can change. When I started working there, it was a two-year wait. It could go back the other way, too, if people suddenly fall off the waitlist. So it's something that's in flux on a daily basis. My two-bedroom waitlists are shorter. But one property doesn't have very many two-bedrooms, so it's still a year to two years for a two-bedroom. At my family property, where I'm struggling to fill vacancies, the wait is much shorter, about four to six months.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is a work session, but we do need to make plans for the next steps. It would be helpful if we kind of knew which way people were leaning. To be honest with you, I've had a hard time getting direction tonight as a council.
Yep, we'll get you there.
Well, just let me finish, then, by saying that I would like to see this go to a public hearing because I haven't heard anything from my constituents on this issue. hearing because I haven't heard anything from my constituents on this issue yet. And I would very much like to hear from the public on this before we make a final decision.
Mayor, Council, we, we have, this was traditionally, they would have the public hearings and just come to council at the second meeting. We asked the Verde Valley Homeless Coalition to please meet with the council beforehand. We didn't want the council to be blindsided and they were very gracious to go ahead and, and come to the council before they even began their public hearings. As I mentioned earlier, April 27th is their first public hearing and then May 5th, it comes back to the council for the final decisions for council to make. And it will be a public, that would be also their second public hearing.
I think it'd be nice to get a sense first from council if we would like this to just move forward to the public hearing process. Because if, I don't want to set anyone up, the community or the board, with the expectation that's going to move forward if, if we just don't support the.
I'm fine with going ahead with the public hearing, assuming, we could still pull the plug at any time. So I don't think there's, and to hear what the public has to, has to say and how they feel about this, I think is important at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Rudy, that's the same night as our budget hearing, so this won't be happening, oh, no, May 27th is a public hearing?
April 27th is a public hearing.
That's the same night as our budget hearing.
Does not necessarily have to be here. It can be at some other location. This is, because it's a homeless coalition, they could have it at their facility.
So the council won't, it's not a council meeting?
No, this is a public hearing, open public hearing. Sorry about that. I didn't explain well enough.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm willing to see this thing move forward. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but earlier you had asked them, we didn't have an answer yet on whether this grant money is being split up. So we have a drop in center element and we have a transitional housing element. So if one or more of those didn't work out, I think you were waiting for an answer on that.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, I think that question has to be answered before we sign on the dotted line to, I mean, the city needs to know what the liability is. Because I, I would think what I've heard tonight is if it's the overnight shelter, they've got three years of track record of getting that done. The transitional center is the newer piece that, you know, they need to, the council's been asking about the administration thereof. The other thing is, I know, I believe there's a business plan on this. And so I think we should take a look at that before we make a recommendation. But we've got a few more weeks, but I would agree, sir.
Okay. So then I'd like to hear more on that. And for the, for the board, I'd like to hear more about, because the transitional housing is something you haven't done yet. I really would like to see that succeed. I'm a very big fan of transitional housing, helping people get a step up. Sometimes that's all they need. And I'm really a big fan of that type of a program. But I'd like to hear more about later on during the, the process on where and why you think you have the right clientele to be able that's going to step this up. Because when I did talk to some people that were very knowledgeable and very experienced with homeless situations, when it came to a drop in center, they didn't have any confidence that those were the type of people that wanted help. That's just where they were and that's who they were. And I realized there's different kinds of people out there and you can maybe draw from a different population. So I'd, I just would like to hear what your plans are, not necessarily tonight, but through the process anyway, on why you feel that you can make this transitional housing successful, which I very much would like to see.
Just, in, per year, we help about 10 people find permanent housing, working very closely with Catholic charities. And it's about the same number for, for finding work. So we do have a track record now. It's just that those we help find work, we aren't, they're not moving into transitional housing. So, so we have some background here.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to see you be very successful with this. But I, I do not want to see the city supporting this program if you fail. And I don't really want to see us having to try to sell that property to recoup in our investment. So I do, really do want you to be successful.
And I would agree. I don't, I, the worst thing that could happen is we wind up having to, you know, sell the property, you know, cut, cut the programming. And I don't want to see the city run a transitional housing. Not, you know, I do want to add more to your plate, but that's not one of the items I'd like to add to your plate. But I would agree. And I think, you know, the 1.6 they're applying for, I don't think we're going to get a check for 1.6 and hand it over directly to them. So I think the risk is going to be mitigated over the draws that they take. And so it's really mostly for capital. They're going to purchase the property a million dollars. That's then going to be, the, the cities essentially, should they fold. The rest of the $600,000 is going to be spent again on, on capital improvements there for building a, a facility. And it's going to be taken out in draws. And so again, we're going to have tangible infrastructure in place that will help us recoup our losses if we, if we have to. And that's the worst case scenario. But I agree, I certainly don't want us to be in that position. Well, I think we've got, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see it move forward. The transitional housing is definitely in need here. A little worried about the liability, but if we have the, the property, we can at least recoup some of that. The one question I did have is if they do fail, can we transfer that grant to another nonprofit to take it over?
I think once we own the property, we do whatever we want to with it. We've already paid, we will have paid it off. So.
For the grant, if we don't take.
I, I don't believe it's transferable. I, I, we can go ahead and check and get that information to you, but I don't believe it would be transferable as another grant.
But at, but at that point, we will have spent the CDBG money because they will have built the transitional housing and all of that. So transferring the responsibility of running it to another nonprofit would be within our, our wheelhouse, right?
Exactly. Once we, once, well, we would, once we would pay back the CDBG and we would own the property, it's, it's for us to do as we would need to. But if, in a sense, you wouldn't be transferring it, you would be outright owning it and doing other, putting it to a different use. Okay. I think we've got some, some direction. We'll go ahead and we'll keep council informed of when our, where the April 27th meeting will be at. You do have a council meeting that day. So we'll try to see if we can't work it around the council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, does, does council want us to change one of those meeting dates? I didn't know if council actually wanted to attend that public hearing.
If we get staggered.
Yes, this is Councilmember Henry. I would like to attend the public hearing. Also, this is a quick question for, for you, Ron. Which of our, who at the city is going to be in charge of, of this program if it moves forward? And like as far as, on that point, as far as the mechanism of the ownership piece, I, I mean, we're, we're essentially liable. So it's not as though we can just transfer the property. We'd have to sell the property in order to recover the funds. Am I mistaken?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, no, you're, you're correct. We would own the property and then to recoup the money, we would have to sell it. Back to who's going to manage the program, I need to make sure her hands are empty. But Kirsten, our finance director, manages our grants and our processes in and out. So her and her significant staff would manage the program. And, and that's why I think you heard Deputy City Manager Rodriguez mention several times, it's, it's a concern for staff because of the work involved. But, you know, as the council pleases, we'll make it happen.
And I just had a follow up question on that because as I said in my earlier comments, I, I really like this program, both aspects of it. But I really would like some other community partner to, to come to the table because I don't think that serving as the pass through for a grant of this magnitude is in the city's lane at all. And I think it sets bad precedent. We, it's risky moving forward. And it, it would just be so much, it'd be a win-win to find somebody else. But there was a brief comment that said, we've tried and they haven't been able to find anybody. Have we exhausted all avenues of trying to find some other organization? Because it's one thing to say, if the city has more experience, we do it better. That doesn't mean that we, we need to take it on if there is someone else that perhaps can rise to the, the challenge and the opportunity that this poses.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, so I'll let the homeless coalition speak to what they've tried, other people they've tried. Mr. Rodriguez and I, and a couple others, were on a call today with the Arizona Community Foundation, looking at some possible help in that arena. And we, we kind of struck out. There's a lot of opportunities, but none that matched helping the city guarantee loss of income or, you know, this project failing. But we haven't been able to find anybody. And I, but again, I'll let Mr. Flynn mention who they, or what they've tried to do to secure other options.
We are in the process of approaching deep pockets and one governmental organization to try to see if we could lay off the risk to them. We have had one strike so far. So we're still trying. I'm not confident that we will succeed. It's, it's a, it's a tough sell. So I don't know. This may come down to asking city council to take that risk. If we can find anybody else to do that, we will.
But it's, so if I heard correctly, we, we, the coalition's approached one organization and, and not been successful. So I don't know if perhaps that's, there's an opportunity there for the city to, to work with the homeless coalition about possibly identifying other, other organizations. I know, like you said, Jennifer Perry, I don't know if Jennifer was the one, but the Arizona Community Foundation, they may not be the appropriate one, just with their role. But I, I mean, I think it might behoove the city to, to maybe spend some time brainstorming if that, that process hasn't already occurred.
So we have gotten a firm no from Spectrum, which we had hopes for. In page, the health organization has played that role. Spectrum has said they will not. And we have one individual that has said no. We are, we are approaching, we are in dialogue with others, but we have not gotten to yes or no with others.
But to be clear now that.
Is this them?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just questioning if perhaps the county couldn't also be brought in for these discussions as well?
We can ask.
I just think before we take on this liability, we should perhaps just spend a little bit more time and legwork trying to identify. This, this happens in other communities throughout the country. And it's not always a, a particular city that has to take on the, the grant, the, the liability there.
And I, I hear you 100%. I wish that Ms. Rollins were here to answer some of those questions. I know she's, she's really tried to seek out other alternatives than, than the city being the pass through. Again, when, when the board's been out searching for, for folks with deep pockets, as Mr. Flynn said, it really is to provide sort of a financial backstop to this program, which would just assuage the concern of council so that we don't feel like we'd be on the hook. But it's my understanding, the city would still need to be the pass through organization. It wouldn't be the, the woman or gentleman with deep pockets. It would still have to be the city.
That's correct. The city must be the pass through. What we have tried to do is see if we can find a deep pocket that says they would take possession and sell the building and be responsible for the, for the funding.
And do you mind explaining that, please? Is it the city itself or is it a municipal organization or other public entity? I, my understanding was it wasn't limited to the city, that there were other options that, or, or criteria, but it, it could be expanded. And perhaps my understanding, I just must be wrong.
I think your understanding is correct. We'll, we'll approach the county and see what, see what options we have with them and, and see if there's something at some other zones we can turn.
Mr. Mayor.
I was just told that, no, it has to be the city. So can someone explain what, what are the criteria for this? So we know what we're looking for.
And when we talked to NACOG, who was helping us with this particular program, the cities would be the most appropriate to be the pass throughs. But my understanding is that, that we, if we can find someone else, that's why we went to Spectrum, there, we, there are some options. So we can go ahead and approach the county and see if they're willing to take on the responsibility.
One thing, please, let's get our facts straight, please. Either it has to be the city or it doesn't. So I, I don't like misinformation, you know, being told in a public meeting one thing that isn't true.
Those were, those were the, the words from NACOG, who was helping us with this particular grant, or helping them with a particular grant.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Henry, also, I wanted to clarify a statement. I said, I, as we're sitting here, Phil, the county minister, and I have actually had a brief discussion about this project. So I'll just make a follow up call to him. He was, without talking to his elected officials and boards, it's not something the county usually does. So he wasn't comfortable just taking the lead on it. But I'll, I'll circle back with him and, and see if he's, has any more information on, on the will of his, his board.
All right. Thank you, Ron.
And Councilmember Henry, we'll get more information to it. It seems, it seems to me like you're at least comfortable moving forward with the public hearing. And within that time, then we can get more clarification from NACOG, Arizona Department of Housing, on, on those specific parameters of this grant to make sure that all the questions that you and the rest of council has have been answered thoroughly.
But just.
But to be honest, I actually have greater concerns following this conversation because we don't have good information. We're being asked to take on a significant, you know, we're, we're being asked to dedicate significant staff time, city resources potentially, to this project. And we don't have good answers tonight. And that's concerning to me. It's concerning in light of the past issues with this organization. And so honestly, I, my comfort level is less after hearing the comments tonight than it was beforehand. I'm sorry.
So can I get clarification then? We're, what we're really looking for is to get a private donor that will essentially guarantee for us. We will still be the pass through. But you're trying to get a private donor that will say, look, if, if it fails and you guys are on the hook, we will step in and reimburse you for that? Or partial or?
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Matthews, that, that's correct. Helping, hopefully to take off the risk. We would still be the pass through and still do the administrative work. That was, it's an issue for us. But if it wills the council, you know, we were going to take on that responsibility. We were trying to find ways to do away with the, the risk, including the differential between the, the value of the land and whatever we still owe was one of our goals. When I speak with the county, I will take a little bit of a different approach and see if they, they want to take on the grant. Maybe they have grant writers in some of their other places, you know, in some of their organizations. But, but Phil and I'll have a good conversation about what their help can be.
Go, if I could go back to your question, Mr. Corbin, about the public hearing, however we can work it out, I also would like to attend that public hearing. So if that means moving our budget session, fine. Or if they can schedule that around us, that'd be okay too. But I really do want to hear from the public.
Yeah. When I caught the dates, I figured that as much. We'll, I can't tell you which way we'll go, but we'll, we'll, by tomorrow, we'll make that decision because we have a lot of work to do with the budget. So we want to get that done.
Yes, we can go ahead and move the date. Would, and we can go ahead and we either come here if, if the council would like, or we can have it at another offsite location. We'll, we'll figure that one out and notify the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, the, the population of entities that can sponsor this project under this program are nonprofits and what's termed collectively as units of local government.
Okay. And that's from the, that's from the grant itself that you're reading? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll approach the county. Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
But it sounds broader, and I appreciate that, City Attorney. It sounds like any nonprofit could be the sponsor.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Henry, yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, again, it would have been nice to have Ms. Rollins here to help with some of those questions. But they're good questions and we'll get the answers. And staff, do you have the direction that you need? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Item two is presentation of the departmental goals for budget year 2021 and 22.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I am Kirsten Lynn, the Financial Services Director. Tonight, Ron and I are going to tag team this presentation. And hopefully, we make it fun. and interesting. So this is the goals for our FY '22 budget. And then at the end, we have our budget calendar, which just sounds like we're changing.
No, I don't think so. Mr. Mayor, if I can, before she starts, I'd also like to make sure that the format is clear. This is a presentation to you guys on our goals, like she said. We've made our budget. We're very close to wrapping it up. A lot of the high-level staff decisions have been made, and as I told a group of employees today, it's all recommendations. Council gets to make the decision. But we've made a lot of our first decisions based on these goals and, of course, the strategic plan of the city council. So I would love for this to be a dialogue. I don't think I want to wait till the end to answer your questions. Feel free to interrupt and answer those questions as we move through. And just feel free to ask for clarification or remind us of a goal that you had that we haven't included and those kinds of things. Because we want to make sure that when we come to you on the 27th, you know, we have a budget that you guys are at least mostly okay with.
So part of the budget process this year was creating our goals based on your strategic initiatives. The Government Finance Officers Association, who we apply to every year for a budget award to try to meet their criteria, has changed their structure. They want to make sure that your budget is following your council's strategic plan. So that is one of the big things that they want to see. And that went into effect on any budget that is adopted after January 1st of 2021. But they give you one year to kind of work on it. And so then, this is our work-on-it year, and then next year's budget for 2023, we would have to have these elements in our budget. So we're just going to go through the different departments and the goals that were set and will be included in the budget. This year, we kind of tried to limit how many goals people could have. We said, let's put four really important goals in there and then match it to the strategic plan. So council's goals are going to meet some of the strategic initiatives like embracing financial accountability and transparency through fiscal conservatism. Ooh, that's a hard word. They're doing this by increasing the city's cash reserve and making a percentage that we want that cash reserve to be at. They're also going to obviously implement the strategic plan, and then they're going to work towards improving our infrastructure by allocating more funds to sidewalks and roads. And that's not only improving our infrastructure, but it's fiscally responsible as well because we're maintaining our roads and keeping those healthy. The administration is going to, I put too many notes, it's on the next page, foster sustainable growth and development by exploring more diversity in housing solutions. This also meets another strategic goal of ours, which is ensuring our quality of life. We are also fostering sustainable growth and development by developing core values that will help employees find the yes with businesses.
So I want to talk about some of the goals specifically that we have in that with the reserves. I think when you see the budget in a few weeks, we're about 25% will be the new goal, and it's a good number. I think you'll be very excited about seeing that. Also, we do have the biannual, if that's the right word, $750,000 for payment preservation. We are currently putting in First Street to finish the sidewalk project there. We'll talk about the design in a little bit, but most of that was done in-house with our own staff to save some money to roll it over to the next year. Rudy has begun to put together the nonprofit group so that we can have a coalition in the community and working with council members to get that done. With housing, we've already had our first housing meeting of Verde Valley, we're working on that. I've also, just as an update to that, very excited about next year and housing. So I met with Karen, the Sedona City Manager, the other day, last week. And you will see a proposal for us to spend some of the CARES grant money that we have setting aside on some housing stuff. That includes sharing an employee. So originally, I thought we were going to have to hire our own employee to really, you know, get this off the ground. As I said earlier today, we met with the Arizona Community Foundation, and the one thing I did learn after talking to very smart, three very, very, very smart ladies about housing, I don't know anything. And there's a lot of stuff to know. And so Sedona and I, I'll be bringing something for you to approve, an IGA with Sedona on an employee that will tackle Verde Valley regionally. So it's a partnership. They have little land, we have more land, we have more housing projects, so I think it'll be a great project. We're also exploring a down payment assistance program. So they've already have a meeting scheduled coming up, I think it's next week, that I'll be listening in on, where they're going to use an organization out of Flagstaff to manage a program that will help people with down payments in moving into the house. And they have some funding for that. I also actually think we have the funding for that if we use our CARES grant money to seed that. And the way it would work, it would eventually be a revolving fund and self-sustaining, not a grant, but a loan program. So we're making progress. I also have good news. The big group that originally did the housing study, our review as a group of the draft is next week. So the consultant has, will have that wrapped up by next week, the draft. And so we'll get to do that, and we will hopefully present that to council very soon, early May at the latest, maybe the May 5 meeting, or maybe the work session in May. But we're very excited about that. That's almost done, and it's been a long journey, so I'm very excited about that. So we're making some progress on the housing front. You know, there's no silver bullet, but I know it's a priority for council, and staff is working on that. So in the budget process, you'll see us come forward with some of that stuff. And then, of course, one of the goals was, you know, looking at consolidating City Hall. We're on it. And then, the one thing that I wanted to make sure that you knew, that we are taking on a program of recognizing, identifying, and labeling our core values as an organization. As a city manager, it's very important to me that we all are in agreement and working in the same direction and in the same way. A backstory to that is, you know, we haven't done merits since I've got here. One of the issues with merits is we need to have a performance evaluation system that is fair and consistent across all departments, or as much as can be when you have humans involved. So we have started that process. We will implement a new performance evaluation next year with no attachments, no merit increases being recommended next year. And so it'll be a real chance for people to have good conversations based on our values. So we're going to do a lot of actions over the next few months and get us ready as an organization moving forward.
At some point during this presentation, it may already be in there, but if not, if you could, at the appropriate time, talk about if the governor's budget plan goes through with the cut in income tax? If, I assume that's not a guaranteed thing yet. So if that does get implemented, how that's going to affect what we're looking at and when it will affect?
Not for two years.
So it's a couple of years out, so we do have that on our radar. One of the things you'll see in a few weeks is our numbers, and I think it'll be better to talk about it then. I think we have some built-in stuff that we'll be able to make adjustments at that time.
If it gets passed.
If it gets passed. My concern is these decisions are being made in a robust year. So if you remember, the federal government has given away a lot of money, whether it be direct to citizens, or whether it be businesses, or grants. And my concern is there's an artificial inflation of the amount of cash out there and available and spending, and we have a system based on sales tax. So we're solid, we're good moving forward, but I think that the repercussions will be years after they're implemented. It's kind of like, in my opinion, the PS/PRS funding. They're making decisions in the good years, and then we live with the decisions in the bad years. And so I do have concerns, but it's not an immediate budget concern in the next couple of years.
That's fine. I didn't realize it wouldn't affect us for a couple of years.
Don't want to push it too many times. So the city clerk, she is meeting the strategic plan by ensuring our quality of life while also fostering sustainable growth and development by promoting local industries. And she's going to do that by holding some wine and art events this spring, which she has been doing before COVID. She had been doing that, and she's going to continue to do that. And she's also going to work on our financial transparency and engaging and coordinating council and neighborhood meetings to engage citizens. Our legal department, he is working on his succession planning. These were his goals he submitted, and his plan is to retire sometime in the near future. And that is really his main goal. And in that succession planning, he's embracing financial accountability and transparency and working towards that goal of what we're, how we're going to handle those services, either in-house or with an outside agency.
The other thing I'll add on the city clerk's office is she's asked for an update online program to help with records, open records--
Public records requests.
Thank you, ma'am. Public records requests. So you'll see that in the budget coming up. And the legal department, Steve and I still need to have a few more conversations, and he needs to have a couple of conversations with council. We have a couple pending budget requests. One is a full-time employee that is a paralegal that also helps me in a management analyst position. And so if you guys go a different direction, if you don't want me to hire a paralegal to help with the transition, then I'm not going to ask for a part-time management analyst because I don't need a full-time, and we'll just continue to manage as. I do have a need, but it really goes hand in hand because I'm not asking for anything that causes any overstaffing. So as we move forward over the next few months with budget discussions, coming to an understanding of what the plan is for transitioning the city attorney's office will be an important thing even for the budget.
So the finance department, we are always in the financial accountability and transparency. That's what we do. So we are going to work on developing a budget and brief, which is going to be a less than 10-page document that basically summarizes our 307-page budget document. And then we're also going to work on updating our budget information and our resources online up to date, so everyone has that info. And part of that was this year as well, giving the council budget reports monthly. Human Resources is going to embrace financial accountability by succession planning and rightsizing the organization and retaining qualified employees. We're also, she's also contributing to ensuring our quality of life with a volunteerism program to help in our brand and our city pride. And part of that is we're getting ready to join efforts with United Way to allow employees to volunteer for United Way and to donate money to United Way-sponsored events and programs.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I want to back up on the city clerk's office. She's also going to be helping those budget meetings, budget hearings. So Mr. Rodriguez is working on getting some public outreach to our community groups to see if they want to have us come out like we did, I guess it's been two years now, two years ago. And the clerk will host at least one budget session, public budget session at City Hall. The problem is, last year, the two years ago, nobody showed up, but we're going to, we'll try again, and hopefully, they'll show up. But Mr. Rodriguez is working on some of those. So the clerk is a great partner with outreach and providing opportunities.
And charity has that scheduled, so.
Very good. And then I want to talk about human resources and employee retention. I think you'll see a couple of things that she's going to help do and recommend, and that's the market adjustments. You'll see that coming up in front of you. We're also currently planning to fund tuition reimbursement, which hasn't been funded in several years, and I think that'll be a morale booster. We should be able to get something going on that. It's actually in Kirsten's budget, but we're very excited about that. We're also looking at some other benefits, such as there's a way to get some insurance for our part-timers who currently don't have benefits at no cost to the city. We just have to kind of sign up for the program, so we're going to try to do that with our part-timers. You know, it's hard to get part-timers sometimes, and so anything we can do to help with that. But there's a lot of other great programs that HR and finance are putting together, and it's going to be a great year.
So purchasing is going to foster sustainable growth and development and business retention, and again, finding the yes and helping businesses get open by making sure that all business registrations are approved as quickly as possible. And he is also working on implementing the DocuSign software, which helps with contracts and amendments and things going in between city staff and outside of city staff. And then IT is working on improving our infrastructure through eliminating public safety radio issues and merging our phone system, and then also replacing the MDCs in the police department.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, the other thing our purchase department will be working on is consolidated City Hall. That's going to be a lot of work in his wheelhouse here coming up soon. And then for IT, you'll see in the budget significant investments in IT. As you know, sort of the last couple of years, we've had a couple of issues with IT. You'll see us doing that. One, a little ahead of myself there, is possibly at the airport, which will also help the city. So our IT director, John Carter, and Mark Williams are working together to try to get that done. And then we are doing everything we can to fix all the issues at the police department and public safety building to make sure the radios work. You'll see in the budget a request and funding for some new radios. You'll see, thank you to the commanders and the police department working with Motorola to fix most of it rather inexpensively, saved us a lot of money there. Mr. Carter's wrapping up, you know, wrapping it up, checking a couple of other things to make sure we've covered our bases. And you'll see whatever is else needed in next year's budget, but very excited about the work IT is doing to help the city run like a modern city.
When you call the city and you're put on hold, there's that real jazzy upbeat music. Just want to make sure that that doesn't change.
Okay, we'll make sure.
Mr. Rodriguez is taking notes.
Just, it's critical.
And if you're on a conference calling, you put people on hold, they get to listen to it, too.
Question. Weren't we going to update the website?
We are. We ran out of time at our last meeting on Monday, but it's on Mr. Carter's list to do. We did a survey, internal survey, to see what we thought we needed to do. We actually internally don't believe we need a new website. We believe that we can fix things a lot cheaper and just updating. I can tell you that Kirsten has actually said yes to a few projects that moves customer service interactions from live persons to online. Do you want to mention some of them?
Yeah, well, one is that it's in the presentation a little bit later, that community development is working on a permitting software that is online, so that you can do permitting online. And then also, I've been working with our bank to have a payments page where you can make payments to any department for anything at a one-stop shop, so that you don't have to go all over the place to try to make a payment, and it's all online, so that they don't have to come in or call to make a payment.
Is there going to be a fee for that?
No.
So it's little things like that that we think will make the website user-friendly and more attractive. I believe that the work that Trish and Heather, Trish, our economic and tourism development director, and Heather Herman, our partner, the stuff that they did with the Visit Cottonwood website, I think is great, and so we're going to, you know, try to use some of that, too. But again, I think, give us the year, and we'll get her done.
Okay, so the court is going to ensure quality of life by promoting volunteerism at the court, and they actually currently have someone who's a volunteer working in the court. And since they have that volunteer, they only had to fill one of their full-time staffing positions with a part-time person, so they also helped financially and fiscally responsible, saving some money there. And then economic development is going to foster sustainable growth and development and focus on business retention, which is what their job is. And they're going to do that by working with the chamber and identifying a single-point contact for all businesses to get business feedback when they come to the city of Cottonwood. And the court's also installing a standalone drive-up drop box, so defendants can make payments without having to come in.
Just a great example of our courts. Our judge is awesome. Learned some stuff today that we really don't have time to go into today, but she's just amazing, and I really appreciate her partnership with our police department and the work that they're doing in our community is just amazing. But it's also innovation that I love. If she doesn't need the employee, she's not asking for it. If she doesn't need the employee, she's not asking for it. She found a way for him to take excuses away. So I see it convenient, she sees it as removing excuses when people are in front of her. One of the complaints was, you were closed. I stopped you at 5:05. I was right here and, and you guys were closed, so I couldn't make my payment on time. So working with our public works, our facility maintenance team, we are installing, if it hasn't already been installed, a drop box outside of the courthouse, so they can make their payments on time and not be in trouble with our judge. Just a great jurist and a great leader over there. And then with the economic development, a couple of things I wanted to mention was my current plan with the chamber, so that I could get different direction later or, but the current budget is set up to fund the chamber just as it is being funded this year. So it's about $70,000. That includes the centers, the welcome centers, and then a membership into the, to the chamber. So the current plan is to status quo. And then in January of next year-ish, January, February of next year, we will RFP the tourism piece of what the currently we're doing in-house. It's never been meant for us to do it permanently in-house. If, if that needs to be the case, we can do it, but I will need an additional staff member to help. Trish spends a lot of effort on tourism and we would like to transition her to more economic development as we move forward. So the plan is to RFP that out and see what organizations, whether it's a chamber or another nonprofit or another organization, that wants to take on managing the tourism piece for the city, what's called the designated marketing organization. So we also plan to fully fund tourism this year in the next year's budget. Remember, we only gave $100,000 this year. 50 of that goes to the AOT right off the bat. And then, you know, Heather's contract, I think, was 10 or 15. So the money went, you know, pretty quick. Couple articles in the Phoenix Magazine and we were, we're out of money. We plan to fully fund it, and by fully fund it, we mean?
200, a little over 200,000.
For tourism efforts in the next year. So then we believe we'll set the standard of expectations of whatever organization takes that over the next year.
So community development and ordinance enforcement. Community development is, again, fostering sustainable growth and development by starting and ending with being open for business. And part of that is getting a quick turnaround on their permit applications and making sure that they're providing services online, which is what we're working on in the budget process. And then, again, finance, we're assisting them by doing an online payment. They'll be able to pay for their permit via their program and on a separate page if need be. So it's easy. So if they just already know their permit information, they can just apply the payment. And then they're also working on outdoor economics and expanding trails and creating and looking for new opportunities for trails. And ordinance enforcement is ensuring our quality of life by offering awareness and educational programs. And they do that through public outreach. And fiscal responsibility by applying for Spain newer grants, which they have applied for these grants and they've received them, I think, three of the four years that they applied for that grant.
So a couple of things about community development. That online program, I think, is a game changer. It does move us into this century. They can submit their applications for permits and whatnot in most communities online, but they still need to come down to Cottonwood. So we're going to, we're going to get that fixed and help that out. We also believe it'll help with the reporting mechanisms. The monthly reports you guys get, they put a lot of hours, time, staff time into those. So this will streamline that, save them a little time there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the work Gary Davis, one of our planners, is doing on trails, as Kirsten said. It's just been amazing. We had a ribbon cutting today of some of the trail stuff that he does. And while Mr. Hauserman, our public works manager, and Marty and that team made it and Rudy found the money for it, he's putting the final touches on it. So he found the signs and all of those kinds of things. He's also been doing work on Cliff Rose Trail, which is right on our edge of our town. He's also been working with the Del Monte Trail that we're trying to develop out there, great guy, that we're trying to make some headway on our trail system. Very excited about that. And then, I don't, little unsung hero back there in the back corner, Rudy. So the Humane Society, if you guys remember a couple of years, about a year ago now, I guess, we were having contract issues. And his patience and his fortitude got us a contract and sure enough, everybody has followed. So if you remember, the county moved out for a little bit, they're back. Clarkdale took them a little longer to get it. And I really believe that Rudy set the standard, working with the, clarifying the confusion and the issues with that organization. And we believe we have a good contract and, and set to move forward with that.
Streets and street construction and parks and building maintenance work very closely together. Streets is always improving and maintaining our city infrastructure. It's their job, maintain our roads. And next year is no different, and they want to develop a map for sweeping and initiate a stringent schedule to make sure that that's always happening, that the streets are always being swept. And they want to institute a pre-pavement preservation and crack seal program that also maintains our infrastructure and of course sidewalks. And they plan on, and it's currently in the budget, to do the first street sidewalk. So parks and building maintenance, they want to improve efficiencies through having a program for our HVAC and our lighting and any type of maintenance that needs to be done. And by doing that, they're improving and maintaining our infrastructure as well. And that, those replacement programs and plans really need to be in place to help us budget for the next few years, so that we know exactly what's needed for years to come.
So Mingus, I'm not going to give you a date, but very soon we shall be out to bid on the rest of Mingus, very soon. So I'm very excited about that to wrap that up. And David and his team have done a great job of trying to get this to the finish line, but you'll see the RFP, RFQ go out very soon. And before you know it, we'll be starting constructions and you'll be getting the complaints on the road being closed. So just a heads up to counsel, those complaints are coming, but we're very excited about that program. And then able to fund the first sidewalk, a lot of other projects on, on, on the, on the books. David will be coming, our public works manager, he'll be coming back at some point, I don't know when, to do a presentation on the actual list of projects and the sidewalks and make sure that we're matching your priorities.
So parks and rest, parks and recreation is fostering economic growth and development by doing more outdoor economics, promoting their parks and their park use. And they are really going to try to track and get some usage data to see how many people are using our parks. And then they're also going to increase the usage of the disc golf course. Not that it's not busy, because I always see people there, so people are using it. But they're going to promote maybe an event or something to help that be more visible. And then they're also going to support sustainable tourism by hosting events consistent with our brand. And one of those events that we do plan on hosting next year is TBR. So we are in the processes of talking about planning for TBR and what that means and what that looks like. So the recreation center is going to ensure quality of life through volunteerism and financial transparency. They're, they are looking to start a volunteer program. And there was an ad on, in the paper and on Facebook to get volunteers to come help out at the, at the rec center. And they're also doing financial transparency by making sure that they maintain their infrastructure by having a formal list of things that need to be done for maintenance and operations.
Very excited about this department. We are in the budget, you will see all events. So we have preliminary budgeted all events, so I'm very excited about that. Of course, it's always at council's, you know, options as we go through the year and the pandemic and those kinds of things, but everything is fully funded, including an additional wine event. So if you remember at the retreat, we talked about doing something wine-centered, having a big signature event. And so we're going to begin that process and Jack and team are working with the wine consortium and others to figure out what that might look like, but we are moving forward with, with all of the projects. The run, the vintage run, don't get confused, the one in June is last year's. So we're just trying to get it in before the end of the FY and because people are running again and getting out there. So we'll have the regular one in the spring, I believe it is, next year in 22, but very excited about that. And then I just want to take a minute to brag on Mark Laramore and Jack, the work that they're doing over at the rec center. So they are finding things, replacing them, upgrading them, fixing them, so that they actually work, so that the different, the HVAC is one of those systems that we've struggled with for years over there. And they're, they're figuring it out and getting it to work and bringing in the right people. The sound system is working now. It had issues where there were certain parts of the rec center that it never really worked, the sound, and they've been able to work through those issues. But they're doing a great job of creating efficiencies, upkeeping the place, and doing what they can to keep costs down. And I think, I haven't opened the email yet, but he led with, visits are up and utilities are down. So maybe that's weather-related, I don't know, but I, but I'd like to think that the efforts that the team is making are making a difference. One of the things that as a city manager, and I'm sure David gets calls and other people get calls, let us come help you save money. You know, they want to, we'll tell you which lights to replace and we'll tell you what to do to your HVAC system and it'll save you money and you'll pay for itself. We have staff capable of doing that on our own. And so whether it's our electrician, Chris, from utilities, replacing them with, you know, low-use bulbs, or whether it's Mark, you know, replacing whatever it is, our team is always thinking about efficiency and long-term care and maintenance to reduce costs. So very proud of the team that we have in place right now, taking care of our facilities.
One thing that's on a note on here that Ron didn't mention is that we're also working on that cost recovery at the rec center. And one of the things we were discussing during one of our meetings was that when the rec center opened, they had a staff of 10 full-time staff. They're now down to six and they're running pretty smoothly with the six. Means more part-timers and a little more volunteer help, but it seems to be working out. So that's going to really help them in their cost recovery.
And they also added the youth center. So when they opened up with 10, there was nobody managing the youth center and we have at least, well, it's vacant right now because of housing, but we do, we also have, with that six includes a housing person, or a youth center person.
So the pool, the pool, again, fosters sustainable growth and development by, and they're going to do that by promoting local business. They're going to open the pool and have the, a local business sponsor night swims or other programs at the pool. And then they're also ensuring our quality of life by offering events and programs. And they're financially accountable by reducing energy costs, again, with Mark Laramore from building maintenance and Jack working really hard to reduce energy costs. They also plan on adding additional programs in the pool area. So the youth center, although has not been open, hopefully will get to open back up for the summer. They want to host a Kids at Hope Town Hall, and that will help with awareness and that's part of our strategic planning as well. And then they are going to be leading the environmental stewardship by offering water conservation activities with their youth in the program.
Trying to go into more detail on the Kids at Hope.
So Kids at Hope is a program that is through the school and it's, I don't know that much about it, but I do know that it's, it's a development program to, for kids. Somebody knows a lot more about it than me.
And I believe Councilmember Holtz knows a little bit about the Kids at Hope program too. Didn't, I think you attended a program?
Yes, and the only other thing I would add is it's basically a program to address kids' individual needs and the foundation is basically that any kid is capable of success, but it just has to be recognized. But very prevalent within juvenile probation and as Kirsten mentioned, the high schools.
Very, very excited about that program. The other thing about the pools, when I first got here, we didn't offer lessons in the evenings because adults or other people had the pool in the evening. So we've readjusted our priorities and we will be offering swim lessons to kids in the evening, so that parents, when they get out of work, can still take their kids over and get some swim lessons, whether it be life safety issue and reduced drownings and a lot of other good reasons. But I appreciate Mr. Till's creativity of getting this stuff done.
So public works and engineering, again, they're going to follow the strategic initiative by improving our infrastructure. And we have a CIP plan for sidewalks and for pavement preservation, and they're designing sidewalks and designing pavement preservation. And that hits several of our strategic plans. It ensures your quality of life because you have good roads and good sidewalks. And it fosters sustainability and growth and development because, again, good roads bring business in when you have a better road. And then it improves our local infrastructure.
I'm actually going to skip on this one. You guys have heard the roads story already, but our current team over at Public Works and Engineering are pretty good. I, I just can't say enough good things about them. Our current senior civil engineer came from ADOT. If he doesn't know anything else, he knows roads. He is very helpful in moving projects along. It's either today or tomorrow, they're meeting with the nature conservancy to work on some flooding issues with our businesses. Seventh Street? Yeah, off Seventh Street. Again, we don't really have the, the funding for it and maybe it's not even a city project, but they're being creative and finding ways to help solve problems for our local businesses. We're looking at ways to figure out how in the long-term CIP, we can fund fixing Main Street in Old Town. The, the problem with redoing the pavement is one thing, but we also have to do all the sidewalks. So ADA requires that depending on the work you do on the road, you also have to fix all the sidewalks. And if you've been down to Old Town, you know our sidewalks are not all ADA compliant. So we have to find money for both roads and sidewalks in that area, but, but we're working on that.
And this year is our biennial year to have the $750,000 for pavement preservation. Okay, the police department, the police department is ensuring quality of life and enhancing partnerships with other agencies and supporting safe neighborhoods. And this meets the strategic initiative of 2.6.2, if you were looking in the document, if you had it in front of you. Same with the communications. They're supporting safe neighborhoods and financial accountability and transparency by improving infrastructure and partnering with neighbors to provide quality services. They're also looking at developing more regional connections throughout the Verde Valley with other agencies.
Want to give a heads up to a couple of things, and I think by now you've probably heard about our outreach service officer, Officer James Rep, who led a cleanup of one of our areas over there, tons of stuff going out of there. But then follow up with making sure it doesn't get re-encamped and not just arresting people, but working with them to get the services they need, whether that's the homeless coalition or Spectrum, or time in front of our judge. I just learned about a program today that, that I didn't know we were doing, very exciting, where we don't necessarily take someone to jail first, we take them to the judge first. So it's a partnership and the judge can make a decision right there on what, what needs to happen next. Great program. The other thing is, as you guys have seen, we work with PANT, our, you know, narcotics task force. We need to continue to ensure that we have police staffing to support that organization in my opinion. So you're going to see a couple of things in next year's budget and we'll talk more about it in two weeks, but we're going to ask to staff up our police department a little more, including possibly adding another canine to the picture. Believe it or not, those things will actually add to our patrol force, you know, more cops on the streets, day in and day out. So stay tuned on that, but I believe our police department is doing a bang-up job and I think with a little more resources, they'll just do that much better of a job. The other heads up I want to give you is you could see some IGAs with neighboring communities on additional communications services. So as you know, we have a regional communication center, our dispatch, currently dispatches for several fire departments and of course our, our police department. There's a couple of police departments that are speaking with us and staff is actually working through diligently on one of them. So I'd rather wait to make announcements once we're further along, but the goal, and Commander, commanders, correct me if I'm wrong, is we'd like to get it into next year's budget. So we're approaching deadlines, but the, the cities are, are working on trying to figure out if it's feasible and if it works for us and them.
So the fire and medical department are, two of their goals are directly from the strategic plan, where they're ensuring our quality of life by providing- strategic plan, where they're ensuring our quality of life by providing educational awareness about fire safety. And the library is ensuring our quality life by promoting volunteerism and working with other agencies to ensure that all those agencies have volunteers. They're going to do a regional volunteer pool. The Fire Department is also expanding their public safety and educational programs for CPR and first aid. And they're also both going to foster sustainability and growth and development by promoting our brand.
So as you know, we have a new fire chief doing a great job. Not sure I want to tell you guys this yet, it's pretty big news, but we may have found a way to fund our ladder truck. So if it all pans out in two weeks, we'll be bringing that to you, and we think we can fund that. As you know, it's been offline for a little while right now, and we think we have it connected up for you, so stay tuned in a couple of weeks. We think we have a plan to bring you with adding no new debt for that truck. So that's a one and a half million dollar expenditure, but we think we have it for you, so stay tuned. Fire Department's doing a great job, they're working on, and I'm going to say this wrong, so Chief Salm can feel free to come up and correct me, but a lot of their wildland fires and mitigating risk, whether it be the edges of the town, working on preventing areas susceptible to burns, helping with community areas that may need a little tuck, a little trim, a little burn here and there, working well with our Public Works Department and other departments to identify the need and getting out there and practicing. They're also working to uptrain our Fire Department staff to make sure that they can respond to any nearby forest fire and be able to help in those areas. You know, we've annexed Spring Creek, we've annexed some forest land, and so they're with that, there's some responsibility to make sure that we can partner even if we're not the primary responders. Very excited about what's going to be coming out of that department. And I didn't highlight anything in the library, Ryan's going to be mad at me, but Ryan is doing a bang-up job over there at the library. I can tell you that, again, working with our facilities teams, we are fixing the leaks on the roof. If you don't know, the library has leaked.
Forever.
Thank you. I didn't want to say forever because I've only been here two years, but I think forever is a pretty good number. They've done some stuff over there, and we think by next year, we can seal it up tight, we hope. So very excited about the work they're doing over there at the library.
Transit and Airport. Transit is going to sustain, is going to ensure our quality of life, and part of that is, again, the online payment system, and they want to do a touchless fare system if we go back to charging fares. And then also, they are fostering sustainable growth and development by creating a wine line that will be out of the grant program. It won't be part of the federal money. It'll be its own program to do a bus service for a wine line that takes people from our hub to Clarkdale and back. And then the airport, he's doing a lot of work out there at the airport. There's a lot of stuff going on. We increased our security, he's working on providing broadband internet, he's working on the AWAS, which is going to be coming up soon, and he wants to host a Cottonwood Aviation Day and have a festival out there, no hot air balloons.
Well, let me clarify, and Mr. Horton is on the line, so he can push his button and sigh if he'd like, I surely understand. We're not going to have any in the air.
Yes.
We're going to have some kind of night glow or some kind of event where the kids and families can come see them attached to the ground. So we want to be very careful to do that, but we're very excited about that event to bring out the community. I know that getting the community connected with the airport is an important objective of City Council, so very excited about that. Security out there has, in the last year, has been an issue. We've had thefts, we've had break-ins, we've had issues. So we're working with the Airport Commission to upgrade our policies and procedures as well as infrastructure. And again, Chris from Utilities ran a lot of electricity lines out there so we can install cameras, the IT Department's installing the cameras, David's helping build defenses and poles and his team. It's a great teamwork going on out there, but we're adding cameras, we're fixing the gate so that it does its job better, and then policies that will be followed. Very excited about what's going on out there. I do want to mention that the wine line was mentioned to me when I first got here, and I laughed, but Rudy is really pushing that. Again, I just want to clarify, it will be outside the transit system. So it won't be funded by the federal government because it's not a transit system. It'll be a line. So we've set some aside, some money in the budget to get it started. Rudy's trying to get some buses, some vans, some things that can work, and then we'll work with our partners to see if they'll help do it. We'll start, I think Rudy was saying, maybe Friday, Saturday, Sunday morning, and then see if there's any takers to see how it goes. But right now, I have one restaurant owner who's asked me not to bring any more business to him. He doesn't have enough staff to manage the efforts. If you're curious, they had a record-breaking weekend, this last weekend, with the Hot Rods. So they're doing, at least, he's doing pretty good with his staffing levels. He'd like to do more, but he can't because of staffing issues. But the red line is, we're going to give it a try. The other thing is, we're working with Jerome to try to get a one-day lineup to Jerome. So Jerome wants to be able to get people back and forth to the doctors down here and other places. This is not necessarily for visitors, that's not their goal there. It's for their locals and others to be able to get down and shop, you know, whether it be Walmart, or their doctor's office, or the hospital, or wherever they need to go, the pharmacy. They want to have that opportunity to run several lines. I believe Rudy on Wednesday is currently, right now, three trips a day, four trips on Wednesday. That's what they're looking for.
I also wanted to mention that the airport is always looking for grant opportunities to expand our airport and to make it better. And one of the ones that we put in the budget for next year was to repair the taxiway, and one is to do a helipad and get that going. And so those are just grant opportunities where, if he can get it, we have the capacity to do it. And last but not least, water utility and wastewater utilities. Water utility is always working on improving our infrastructure by replacing the arsenic system, and currently, they're doing a meter exchange-out program that will continue for the next several years, and that they are replacing all the meters to be able to be read from the street or from, by Wi-Fi. And they started that program actually this week. So that's kind of an exciting thing to see that that's going to happen. They're also help support our local conservation programs like Project What, and that helps them lead with environmental stewardship. And they're always concerned with maintaining our water and getting more water rights and making sure that everyone has safe drinking water. So the wastewater utility is working on eradicating, I don't, that word is kind of, brayazoin? Close enough? From the Riverfront Plant. And they are always prioritizing our city infrastructure by improving the Riverfront Plant, upgrading the Mingus Plant, and beginning Phase 2 of direct potable water reuse study. And again, they really do lead in that environmental stewardship by, they want to do an injection well and get water back into our water system.
I would like to back up for a minute, and I apologize, this is what happens when you leave your glasses in your office. Sandra's been off for several days, and it's starting to affect me, just to be clear. Communication Center, one of the other upgrades that we're doing over there is, we hope that we'll be able to install programming that will enable our dispatch center to locate 911 calls, cellular 911 calls. Very excited about that, as well as some GIS data reporting, so that citizens and employees can look on the map and really do an evaluation of what kinds of crimes are happening in what neighborhoods, and it just gives a lot of analysis ability. But I'm very excited about that 911 program, and if I've misstated that at all, feel free to correct me. Okay. Back to the water program. Never a dull moment in utilities, let me just say that. Arsenic continues to be an issue. As you know, you guys funded the replacement of two systems for two of our wells. Next year, in the next budget, we plan to tackle another one that will be significantly harder to do because of the other components of the water in that area. The same program won't work, so we'll have to, they're working on another solution for that. As you don't know yet, we probably have another minor violation with the arsenic in one group that we'll be reporting soon. It is one of our, it is our top priority with water. But as we replace the systems and we get them working, those issues should go away. With wastewater, so Riverfront Park, right now, we are working to replace, I'm sorry, to eradicate, as you said, what I'm just calling the bug. Don't really know where the bug come from, but it is from start to finish in that system, and has been found in some locations at our Riverfront Plant. So we have to eradicate it to be able to reuse that water, especially from the Riverfront Plant. So we, I believe, are getting close. The last step, I believe, was to clean out the tanks, the holding well on the other side of the system, it was even in that. And so we had that open the last few weeks, scrubbing the insides and cleaning that out, and I'm killing all those, bugs, not the right word, but I'm calling them bugs, it's easier. So we hope to have that up and running soon. We will run a treatment through it for a year, non-hazardous, you know, to human, it won't affect our ability to reuse the water, but it'll ensure that they don't reinvest. And so we'll be giving that a try, very important. As you know, we have plans to water the Riverfront Park and all of our ball fields with reclaimed water and our cemetery. We can't do that until our water quality is up with the system. So again, this, I know there's sometimes frustration with the Riverfront Plant, but this has nothing to do with the structure or the engineering or any of that. It's we got an infestation and we have to fix it. And so Tom and team have done a great job of addressing it. It's just a difficult problem to attack. And then for the Riverfront, for the Mingus Plant, it's old. And so we have been working with some engineering firms to figure out how to fix, repair, replace, and clean different parts of it, because as you know, it's a singular system, so we can't take it offline to fix and replace certain parts. So they're working on that. We have settled on an option, and so now they're just engineering that out and the costs. Just for sticker shock value to make sure you understand what the future cost of fixing the Mingus Plant is between $3 and $5 million. So it will be significant. Where the mayor and I and others will be working on how to spend the relief money, the recent money that we've got, the 1.4 this year, the 1.4 next year, very limited on what we can do with it. We're actually waiting for a direction from the Department of Treasury, they'll be issuing guidance, because different attorneys have different opinions on what you can use it for. But one thing that I believe is clear, and I believe our city attorney would agree, is we can use it on wastewater and water utilities. That might be a way to use some of that money if we need to, as you know, wastewater is the fund that has the least amount of money in it. Water is solid for the projects we have planned, including the arsenic treatment, that's not an issue. Mingus Plant is a little bit of an issue, depending on what the final costs come out. Now, that money does, I think someone asked earlier about when money has to be spent, that does have to be spent two years?
Yeah, I think you have to spend it within a year.
Well, I think the whole money has to be sent by the end of that next year.
You get one in...
December of '23, I want to say.
We'll get one payment in '22, which is about 1.4 million, and then we'll get one payment in '23.
Right.
About 1.4 million.
So we can't use it for that if we can't spend it, so we have to be very careful that we don't let that money sit there because we lose it if we don't spend it, they're reporting. But a lot of needs in utilities, but we are, I'll use the word aggressively, addressing them and doing what we can. You know, we probably have about five different contracts with different engineering firms working on different problems and different issues. Not abnormal for a utility, but we're not sitting around waiting for things to break. We're doing what we can to increase efficiencies, increase the quality, take care of our environment, and do the right thing. The meter reader is a great project, it's expensive, but in the long run, it makes, it takes less staff time. Remember, our meter readers are also our construction workers that work on our lines and our brakes and all the other stuff, so it really frees up time for them to be able to do the work, makes it more efficient. Kirsten confirmed, it works with our billing system, with our enterprise system, so we're really good to go there.
And we'll also help our utility billing clerks with their, you know, rereads and doing things, it'll cut back on some of that stuff because they can just instantly go look things up, instead of having to send somebody out to read the meter and then have them come back. So it'll be very helpful with leaks and leak adjustments and things. So with that, we have started this process in November. It's a never-ending process for me. You've heard our accomplishments very quickly, one night after a very long meeting about public safety pension retirement funding. And now you've heard our goals, and in two weeks, we'll be bringing back to you a budget that will include all of our revenues and expenditures and what we anticipate to be able to do for fiscal year 2022. With that, if you have any questions?
We're here. Remember, we have two nights scheduled, the 27th and 28th. Often, you guys haven't needed the second night, but we want to make sure that we're available and ready for questions.
All right. Well, I just, it keeps getting better, so thank you. I just love how it's tied to our strategic goals and directives, and thank you very much.
I believe this presentation replaces all of those department representatives that used to come over several nights and present, so that's a very nice streamlined presentation. I'm sure they all appreciate it.
You know, there are some that probably love to talk and get in front of council, but this, really what this is for me is making sure that there's no flip charts up here, I'm just going to call it.
No, nothing that's not needed. I mean, we are presenting goals, these are the goals.
I have one quick question. Is, of course I do. Is solar even a possibility anywhere to provide a better service and to save some money?
So I appreciate that question, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildon. We always look at it, right now, for municipalities, the rebates are pretty low. So back in the day, we did MNUMA, and I think it was considered here, APS had rebates, the state had rebates, and it really made it affordable. So we look at it periodically. Right now, it's really hard to pencil out. So just to, for transparency, your city manager is hesitant with solar. I've seen contracts that I believe did not pay for themselves, and so I'm just real hesitant when I'm promised a savings, because the savings I want is actual dollar savings, not projected savings. So I listen to, we, Rudy gets sales pitches all the time, I get sales pitches, I'm sure Kirsten gets them. I can tell you that Public Works and even Parks and Recs, we get sales pitches. We listen to them periodically. I haven't seen anything recently that I really believed would be worth the effort. One of the places that is, you know, the Rec Center's been talked about, that may come to fruition at some point if we can get it to pencil out, but I don't want to do solar unless council tells me to, just for the sake of doing solar.
That means you did a good job.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.
All right, see you in two weeks. All right, well, that's it, folks. I would move to adjourn. Okay, the mayor made the motion, Councilmember Matthews, seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.